Council meeting of July fourteenth, twenty twenty. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council member Lee.
President.
Council member Papin.
Here.
Council member Aliva.
Here.
Vice Mayor Snyder. Vice Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Holliver.
President.
All council members are present.
Will you please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
The United States of America. To the Republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Okay. Just as an announcement before we begin, this meeting, we are going to be accepting public comments in real time through the Zoom platform. Either through, you can join either on Zoom or dial in. The directions are displayed on the city website with the meeting agenda. So please feel free to join in and if you'd like to speak on an item on the agenda or in general public comment. Use the raise hand feature at the appropriate time and you'll be called on. Okay, let's start with, oh, we have a proclamation proclaiming the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month. And do have anyone from, from either Parks or Recreation or our staff to accept the proclamation? Maybe say a few words.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Recreation Director McKenzie Brady is in the meeting.
Okay. Brady, would you like to say a few words? Okay, or maybe Ms. Cow or Mr. Lem from the Parkside.
Good evening, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Member of the City Council Kealan, I'd just say thank you for the proclamation not prepared, but anyway, thank you so much. And we have had some pretty good recreation program and Parks has been doing a lot of the upkeep and maintenance at our various city parks during this pandemic downtown. Downtown, I mean, so as you walk around town, you see our guys deal with start the shift at six o'clock in the morning around town downtown. And with that, I'd like to, on behalf of all Parks and Recreation staff, I'd like to say thank you to, to the Millbury City Council for the recognition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lem, and we all look forward to groundbreaking on the new recreation center. Hopefully have, we will hopefully have a contract with our design build firms in place in the next few weeks. And we would like to break ground at some point before the end of the summer. So we're all excited about that. Okay, let's see, Vice Mayor Schneider, you have a comment?
Just want to congratulate and celebrate. We had the one year anniversary of the new community garden. We didn't really get to do it fruit, and there were a couple of turnovers of the lots, but thank you for one year plus of having our community garden.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to item two, the agenda overview and staff briefing. Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council. On tonight's meeting agenda, we have our calendar of events, reports and bills and claims. Then we have the approval of the meeting minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting of June ninth and June nineteenth of twenty twenty. We have no oral reports from any city committee or commission chairs this evening. Then we move to public communication. Any member of the public can address the city council for three minutes on any item not on the agenda this evening. Then we move to the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar this evening. Item number five is city council consideration to recess for the month of August twenty twenty. That is actually an action item. There's an error on the agenda. It says informational, but it's actually an action item. Item number six, to consider a resolution authorizing collection of the fiscal year twenty twenty one stormwater fees on the San Mateo County tax roll. Item number seven is a resolution considering adoption of the revised salary schedule for the Teamsters local eight-five-six miscellaneous unit effective the first full pay period of July first, twenty twenty. This includes the maintenance worker two that amends the City of Millbrae Position Control Table for the fiscal year twenty twenty one. Item number eight is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a third amendment to the agreement for the Public Safety Communication Services, which is our dispatch services with San Mateo County. There are no public hearings this evening. Then moving to existing business, item number nine is to receive an informational report on the city's sea level rise adaptation assessment. Item number ten, under new business, is to consider deferring the water rate increase that was to be effective July first of this year to January first of twenty twenty. That's all the business items, Mr. Mayor. Then we move to council comments. My report this evening, I would like to first introduce our new Finance Director, Mr. Mike Sun. He was, he came on board a few weeks ago. Mike is a welcome addition as our permanent Finance Director. He brings over twelve years of experience at the executive management level in both finance and human resources. Prior to joining us, Mike was the Deputy Finance Director at the City of Fremont. So he brings a lot of experience. We're happy to have him on board with his leadership, outstanding communication. I think he's a great fit for our executive management team. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Mike Sun to the Millbrae family and our team. Also, I'd like to recognize Elaine Tran, who's back from maternity leave. She takes over now as our permanent City Clerk. She just returned back from maternity leave on Monday, so we're happy to have Elaine back. Congratulate her on the birth of her son and certainly her promotion to City Clerk for the City of Millbrae. It's well deserved. So I'd like to welcome those two employees. Real quick, I think most of the council knows, but on behalf of the public, as you know, Mayor, Council Governor Gavin Newsom and Bennett announced yesterday that the state is ordering the reclosure of many businesses due to the alarming spread of the coronavirus. Through the order, all counties, including San Mateo County, they're closing the indoor operations in dine-in restaurants, wineries and tasting rooms, movie theaters, family entertainment centers, which are defined as bowling alleys, miniature golf, batting cages and arcades, zoos and museums and car rooms. So specifically for the City of Millbrae, our restaurants can only obviously statewide move to outdoor dining. I'm happy to say that with the interim ordinance that the city council adopted, we're prepared for this. We've been working closely with our local restaurants and businesses, and I've done really everything that we can to make sure that they stay in business and that they're, they're healthy and. Also, fitness centers, worship services, protests, offices for non-essential sectors, personal healthcare services such as nail salons, tattoo parlors, hair salons, barber shops and malls in some counties, not San Mateo County, are required to close under the governor's order. San Mateo County's COVID nineteen infection rate has remained flat, such that San Mateo County is one of the few counties that is actually not on the, on the governor's watch list. So everybody in the county and the City of Millbrae, keep up the great work. I would like to also mention that the library is open for curbside pickup and delivery as well as virtual programs. The Millbrae Library will continue to do the curbside pickup and books and other media. It's a safe contactless service. It's available by appointment only and is available three days per week, Tuesdays from three to seven P M. Thursdays and Saturdays from ten A M. to two P M. And residents can schedule appointments to pick up selected books and media at www.sml.org, which is the county's library website. Also, I'd like to mention the, the start of construction on a main sewer line up at Larkspur. It's a Helen and Larkspur sanitary sewer replacement. It will cause some traffic delays. We have noticed the neighborhood. So that's a project that will not only include the sewer main and infrastructure improvements, then a reconstruction rather than a repaving of Larkspur from Helen Drive up to the two eighty skyline intersection. So a well, well weighted, long, long overdue project. And then I'd just like to again mention that the Millbrae Police Bureau did present the Medal of Valor to Deputy Edgar Manila for his bravery and the rescue of the fire on Hemlock Avenue. So congratulations again for the great job and recognition of Deputy Manila. So that concludes my report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. And I see a comment here that looks like the M C T V feed is coming in as just a black screen on, on M C T V. So maybe if the staff can, can work on trying to get that resolved throughout the meeting. The public at home, please bear with us. See, Councilwoman Papin, is she got a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick comments. I'd like to pull item five for a quick discussion. And also, Mr. Williams, is there an estimated time of completion on the Larkspur project, just so we can let the public know?
Mr. Kealan, I'll refer to Key on the schedule.
The sewer project should be completed within the next eight weeks or so. Shortly after that, we will begin our paving on Lockspur from Crasview down to, I believe is down past to about Helen, and that is a federally funded project to hold back two grand. So the paving and everything should be down, should be outdone by, by late fall around that time, towards the end of this year.
Wait, that's two different things, Mr. Late fall and the end of this year. So. Okay, if we could just try to post something close to let the public know what they can anticipate, that would be exceptionally helpful. Thank you.
Yep, and we'll have a website on the project also available.
Councilwoman Aliva, or sorry, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Sorry.
Thank you. I thought I saw Chief Baron on the call, and I see Chief Kunkel. Can they give us an update of the fire that happened behind, wasn't behind Aviador, behind Andina? And also explain how San Bruno seems to use S M C Alert quite a bit, but we haven't gotten any S M C alerts from the Burlingame, two Burlingame fires that happened in the last week or the Millbrae fire. I'm just concerned that the technology is not working. But if for some reason we decided they weren't big enough deals to alert the neighborhood, then we need to talk about that. And I think this is the first time I've seen Chief Baron on the call, so it's lovely to have him. It's always lovely to have Chief Kunkel.
Can you hear me?
Could you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, this is Chief Aaron from South County Fire. I did receive your email. Councilmember Snyder, and it's not really the practice in this county to put small fires out on S M C Alert. I've kind of been looking into it and keeping track, and there hasn't been any S M C alerts for the small grass fires. In fact, throughout the county, you, you get about five to ten small grass fires a day. So to go ahead and put S M C alerts out for all of those is, is not, I don't think a good practice.
Okay, I can understand that. It's just coincidentally, there was somebody from that very neighborhood who wrote to me a few weeks earlier saying, you know, the grass out there is getting really high. I'm worried about a fire. We're coming into Fourth of July. And then boom, the day before Fourth of July, we have a fire, and the only way the community knows about it is by people talking about it on Nextdoor. And I'm not, I, I hear what you're saying about S M C Alert, but I'm not sure that's the best way the public should be getting information about grass fires when frankly, Millbrae has never had a lot of fires.
Yeah, like I said, I've been a firefighter in this county for thirty years, and it really hasn't been a practice of putting out alerts for small grass fires. I mean, they, they happen daily of those. So to go ahead and start putting S M C alerts out for every grass fire that happens is not a great idea. And this specific fire, I actually just forwarded City Manager Williams some information that we received. We looked into that property with S F O. And, and I sent you that, Tom, earlier. And basically, that's a protected area. So they can't clear cut it, and they gotta, they use goats and, and very limited maintenance on that because of the red-legged frog and the gardener's stake. So it's, that area in general, like I said, is, is, is protected under the environmental protections.
Tom, when we have another fire subcommittee, can we put this on the agenda for a fire subcommittee? I hear what the chief is saying. I'm also saying that the community has, when they bring us in or ask us for information, like the gentleman did several weeks ago, and we don't get back to them, and then this happens, it makes me worried.
Yeah, I don't know if you heard me, Vice Mayor Schneider. Yes, we will put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, let's move on now to the approval of minutes. We have two meetings here. The regular meeting of June ninth as well as the special meeting of June nineteenth. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Annie Oliva.
Happy to second, Mayor. I sent two tiny typos to Angela earlier today. Can we approve without talking about them?
Sure, I will accept that. Okay, so we have a motion from Councilwoman Aliva, a second from Vice Mayor Schneider. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Um, Vice Mayor, may I get clarification on which, which minutes have the typo?
Uh, the, it's the meeting, the regular meeting, not the special meeting. It was the spelling of Principal Dana Luhon. Her first name is actually D A I N A, not D A N A, and there needed to be an E D after the word need when we were talking about the Humane Society, and I left it on Angela's voicemail. I'm sorry, I didn't know, Elaine, that you were officially, officially the city clerk. I should have known, but, so I went to Angela.
It's all right. So let's see, the vote for Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Councilmember Aliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting minutes for the special meeting, June nineteenth, has been approved. As is, and regular meeting minutes of June ninth has been approved by a vote, you, oh, sorry, has been approved unanimously with amendments.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on to public communication. This is the time for members of the public to speak on any item that does not appear on this evening's agenda. Speakers will have up to three minutes, and I believe we'll have a timer come up through the Zoom platform. So if anyone from the public is interested in speaking, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or through your phone, through the phone directions. Okay, looks like we have a couple of hands raised. Let's start with Vernon Bruce. Mr. Bruce?
It's going for that nasty mute button.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. All right, yeah, hi. My name is Vernon Bruce. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council, in advance for the time you're giving me to speak. I own Millbrae Lock. I started it in nineteen seventy-eight, making it my forty-second year here. And I've been on the west side of the three hundred block of El Camino during that entire time. I'm speaking mainly to the parking issues there and of course, the issues with opening up restaurants and whatnot. I just want to make it clear that I've never had any problem with having some parklets out in the street and restaurants being able to be open on the sidewalks and that kind of thing. Just want to stress that if we have too many, we already are getting back to the same situation with parking where it's getting hard to park again, which is a good sign. That means businesses are doing well. But even though there are four empty spots on my block, we're already getting back to that part. So you're gonna have to give some thought to, you know, limiting the number of parklets per block or something. One suggestion I have possibly is opening up the electric charging parking spots that are throughout the downtown there for all to use possibly. It seems like they're underutilized presently, and during this pandemic, that might be something that we can do. Perhaps also putting even a maximum time limit to the parklets that are constructed or a better definition of when to remove them in the future. Because apparently the government's declaration to end the pandemic might wind up being well beyond when it's permissible for the restaurants to pretty much fully open anyway. And I'm condensing this as best I can to get it down to three minutes. And ultimately, in the end, I think if we're going to do parklets and closing this, the entire block off, which was discussed at the last meeting, your last council meeting, I think we need to seriously consider having parking, at least one parking garage in the downtown. We have none. We only have three parking lots, and as such, the probably Broadway alone accounts for about a half of the entire parking. I didn't count all the spots, but that's what I would guesstimate. And again, I thank you for allowing me to take this time to speak with you.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Bruce. The next speaker will be Chris DeRosa.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Mayor Holliver, Vice Mayor Schneider and City Council. My name is Chris DeRosa. I'm a Landing Lane resident. I've been in contact with the city regarding flooding and flood mitigation issues in the area since two thousand thirteen. The area in the past has flooded several times, and I believe it may have caused some damage to a couple of homes in the lower side. To date, due to my doing and through D P W, there's been no flood. Oh, actually, there, let me back up. To date, there, to date, there has been no flood mitigation plan by the city, but, but the D P W has been clearing the Meade Canal on yearly basis due to my doing by having meetings and staying on top of the airport, which improved the flow and preventing the flooding. But as of I know, there is no plan, and the D P W heads who are in charge will retire soon, and we'll have to start this all over again. With regards to the sea level rise adaptations assessment by the city and county, I know you guys put out a survey, but it never appeared to get to us and/or to Bayside Manor or Marina Vista. I think you guys should actually outreach to us.
I'm sorry, Mr. DeRosa, that item will be coming up on the agenda in a few moments. Do you mind holding on until that time? Because this, this is only for items not on the agenda at this point.
Oh, okay, no worries.
Yeah, sorry about any confusion. Yeah, we're trying to work through this, but we'll, we'll get back to you in a few minutes.
No, no worries.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. DeRosa. Okay, seeing no other public comments, we will move on to the consent calendar. And we have four items. Actually, item five has been pulled. We have items six, seven and eight.
I suppose I should, yeah, I suppose I should ask if there are any public comments.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I have a question, please.
Okay.
Um, so I know that we're working through this together on these Zoom meetings, but yet I, I received some emails from the public for the meeting, yet it, and it's not about things on the agenda. I emailed them to our city manager. Would that, when would be the appropriate time to let their voices be heard?
I, I think the intention was, was to no longer use the email function for public comments and to have members of the public join the meeting either through Zoom or by phone to better, to be more representative and better mirror our, our public, regular public meetings and person meetings.
Understand, but yet, I mean, this is a hard time. I mean, just tell me, so what should we do about these emails?
They're for items not on the agenda.
Correct.
I would recommend sending them to the city manager or the city clerk and have the clerk send them out to the council.
Okay, I don't.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, Councilmember Aliva, is, is this the information that you and I had discussed just?
I, I just received.
Previous to the meeting.
Yeah, two additional emails too, so.
So I, I think perhaps under council comments, that, that might be appropriate.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, if you wish to bring them up during council comments, you can do so.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, and council comments in my comments, in my words.
Sure.
Thank you, and I'll, and I'll make sure they get distributed to everybody here.
Very good. Okay, but I, I think, let's see, so we have items six, seven and eight for the consent calendar. Okay, and I don't see any hands raised. I see Mr. DeRosa, I believe that is for the other item. So, okay, motion from Councilman Lee, is there a second?
A second for Annie Oliva.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Member Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Councilmember Aliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder? Vice Mayor Snyder?
My unmute button is not working. Aye.
Okay, Mayor Holliver?
Did you hear me?
Aye.
Okay, content items number six, seven and eight pass unanimously.
Okay, and Councilman Papin, I get a question or a comment on item five?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked the council, I know we generally recess in the month of August. These are extraordinary times. And as part of the subcommittee, which we will be briefing the council on a little bit later in comments, we may need to reconvene sometime in August. And so if we pass item five at this point in time, would the council object if we had an important issue to bring back to the council for discussion or action? I'm not sure how this item would work in that realm.
What's subcommittee?
It's a development subcommittee, which we're just supposed to keep everybody informed about what's going on. We're not making any actions. But we may need to really, the legal counsel has her hand up, so I don't know.
So.
I would be amenable to that solution, but go ahead, Ms. Castle.
Yes, I was going to say what this has typically been is a motion to suspend your regular meetings. You can always call a special council meeting with the mayor's consent at any time. So truly, that's what we've done is, you know, let our general public know that we don't plan on our regular council meetings. But certainly, you have the discretion to call special meetings as the need arises.
Yes, thank you very much. I would move this item ahead just and just alert the council just in case. We don't know yet. But something may come up in these undefined times. So I hope that if anybody's leaving the area, they please let the mayor know and the city manager in case we have to call a meeting. So I move item four, five for approval.
Okay, looks like Vice Mayor Schneider.
I, I would have pulled this agenda item. In twenty sixteen, we had the Rec Center fire. We had already canceled our August meetings. We ended up having multiple special council meetings and a couple of during the daytime special meetings. It's really hard to reschedule when you've got normal time. So in addition to that, the Transportation Agency is releasing bicycle grants that may need our approval to be able to apply for those grants. We still haven't seen the tree ordinance, which has been working for over a year to get a tree ordinance in front of council. If we don't meet in August, even if it comes in two weeks, we don't get the second read. Even if it comes in two weeks, we don't get the second reading until September. It doesn't go into effect until October. Clock is ticking on uh various plans like high-speed rails plan. Those comments are due in August. Uh the climate action plans are due in August. And I just think that with a number of people stuck at home, it's really bad form for us to take time off. So I'll be voting no for this. I'm happy to come back for special meetings. I'll be there, not going anywhere, but I just think it's bad to cancel during a a crisis.
Okay, thank you very much for those comments. Yeah, I I think, you know, there are a couple of of um, you know, pretty crucial. Uh items coming up, the high-speed rail business, um EIR being one of them. I think we will have to. Convene at some point to uh discuss our our response to that. We also have uh the awarding of the design-build contract for the Rec Center. I think the objective is to have that on the meeting of. July twenty eighth, but in case it, you know, it might take a few days longer to finalize the contract, you might have to do that. Um in in August as well. Um so I'm happy to uh support the motion to um. To recess and to to call a special meeting if needed, and it sounds like we likely will have to do. Um but it looks like we have a motion on the table from um councilwoman, I think it was councilwoman Pappen and a. Second from Councilman Lee. Um can we have a a roll call vote, please?
Um this motion is to have to um basically recess for the entire month of August, correct?
Correct.
Regular meetings, yes.
Regular meetings, yeah.
All right, the motion to recess, oh sorry, um Councilmember Lee.
Uh Mister Mayor, I will be available. Uh the governor canceled my trip to Florida, so um.
Sorry.
I will be, I'll be around, so, yes.
Councilmember Pappen.
Sorry for Councilmember Lee, but yes.
And Councilmember Oliva.
I'm going nowhere, but I vote yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor Snyder.
No.
Mayor Hollibur.
Uh I got my vacation out of the way. I'll be around. Uh so I'll I'll vote aye.
Okay, the motion to recess the regular city council meetings for the month of August twenty twenty passed. With the vote of four to one with Vice Mayor Snyder dissented.
Okay, um let's move on now to um existing business business item number nine. This is the information report on the city's sea level rise adaptation assessment. Um could we have a presentation, please?
Good, good evening, Mister Mayor and member of the city council Keeling, uh public folks. I'd like to introduce Millie Crawford. You probably have seen Millie many times. Millie Millie started working for us uh on the Stormwater Master Plan. And then also the FEMA uh new floodplain map in twenty eighteen. And now with the grant that we received to CCAT, we received a sixty thousand dollar planning grant from uh. CCAT, and we have been working with the airport in Burlingame on a collaborative assets on sea level rise uh. Assets on that, and today we have an assessment report that I would like to present to the city council. And with that, I'm gonna turn that over to Millie. Hi, Millie, welcome back to Millbrae.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. I'm Millie Kelly Crawford, and I'm a civil engineer. I'm with Whittord and Kern, and I've been supporting the city as. Mister Lim said uh for several years now. In terms of uh primarily flood protection and drainage type projects. So tonight I'm gonna present the sea level rise adaptation assessment. Um we prepared a final report, and this is just a summary of some of the findings and key takeaway messages for you. Um so I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, and I'm just gonna share my um PowerPoint slides. Give me a moment. Are you able to see what I'm sharing?
Yes. Can you maximize the screen, Millie, please?
I cannot um. And still have um the ability to to have audio controls. So let me see if I can make it bigger and if that will help. Sorry about that. Is that better?
It is better, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Right, so uh this is just gonna provide you with a little background on the sea level rise adaptation assessment. So um you know, overall, the city is a great place to live and work. Um but a lot of the city is close to the bay, and so it's vulnerable to sea level rise. So the the assessment that we've been working on is really about taking practical steps. To try to move toward mitigation and protecting the heart of downtown, which is where the transportation system is. Many jobs, homes and infrastructure that serves the entire community. So even though a a lot of the community is not right next to the bay, may not be inundated directly. There are impacts that will be realized to the entire city if this area is allowed to flood because of sea level rise. So this assessment is focused on how can we identify the areas that will be impacted? What some of those impacts would be, and then how could we potentially protect the shoreline and the city from sea level rise in the future? So as as he mentioned, um the city received a grant to assess the impacts of sea level rise. Um San Mateo County has been working on in this area for a while. They prepared their own assessment that was countywide. Um and this grant that we received for sixty thousand dollars was to look at the city in more in depth. And to build off of the information that had already been provided by the county. Um of interest is the fact that the city of Burlingame was also awarded a grant to do the same type of project at the same time. And so these two plans were developed concurrently. And as a result, there was a lot of collaboration and coordination in terms of. Um the approach to performing the assessment and some of the recommendations that came out of that. So mitigations that are proposed can reduce the overall flood risk, including. Um have the potential to support removal from FEMA floodplanes. For portions of the city that are inundated now, thanks to the remapping by FEMA. So um I I do wanna make clear that the mitigations that um are proposed in the assessment. With support removing the area from the floodplain, but are not in isolation enough to accomplish that task. So um in the future, the city still needs to decide whether you'd like to propose. Um you know, doing the level of work necessary, the engineering um to accomplish that. But essentially, regardless of whether you decide to change the FEMA floodplanes in the future. Protecting the vulnerable areas of the city protects everyone because it allows you to maintain your access to jobs, schools, businesses, et cetera. Right, so let's just kind of provide a a quick overview of the goals of the study. So it was to develop city level mapping of the sea level rise. And we know that things are always changing in terms of our understanding of sea level rise, and so we wanted to take the previous study prepared. By the county and update that with more detail about what's at risk in Millbrae and how we could best address those risks. We also wanted to put a lot of effort into collaborating with other regional partners, so particularly SFO. Um as a a nearby neighbor who's already taken a lot of steps to protect against sea level rise and flood risk. Uh the city of Burlingame, as I mentioned, who was also receiving a grant at the same time. Um and the county. Those are some of the primary collaborators, but I'll show you a list of folks later who were involved in the process.
Can I interrupt?
Oh, yes.
Mayor, uh Mayor, how do you wanna handle this? Do you wanna have all questions at the end, but not have? The slides that correlate with the questions?
I I think let's go through the presentation first, and then um we can go come back to the slides if you have a question about a specific slide.
Well, I have five pages of questions on this pro- project.
Let's get through the presentation first, please.
Infrastructure meeting. Well.
Get through the uh presentation first, please.
Fine.
Okay. Uh so, um another key aspect of the project was soliciting public input to the best of our ability. Um so there was some significant outreach efforts that went on. And um to integrate this study into other future studies. Um and planning documents in order to move the city toward action. This this assessment alone. Does not prepare the city for sea level rise, but what it does is answer some questions and um engage other folks in conversation. Both within and without the city. So let's um just sort of kind of talk a little bit about the sea level rise situation. So the bay has risen eight inches since the eighteen hundreds, according to the tide gauge. And uh you know, future sea level rise estimates vary because we don't know what human beings would do in the future. To mitigate sea level rise, to change their carbon output. And so there are climate models that are used to estimate, and these estimates of future carbon and future. Temperature increases globally vary quite widely. Um so what we did was use um the county's sea level rise estimates as a foundation. Those sea level rise estimates were prepared um twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen based on the the most recent. Information available at the time, uh the Arc Coast Our Future Tools and the National Resource Council's estimations. Uh among others, and they selected a target of the hundred-year floodplain plus three point three feet. As the most likely amount of sea level rise that would be realized by twenty one hundred. So of course, it could vary from here, but in order to be consistent with the county. Uh the city of Burlingame and others, we felt that this would be an appropriate planning level. We also looked at the uh higher-end scenario, which is the hundred-year floodplain plus six point six feet. Alright, so you can see some representations of that area in the map on screen. Uh the blue area is the most likely inundation area, based on the more recent FEMA mapping. Adding three point three feet on top of that. So this is a new map that was not available in the county's assessment. It gives us a better sense of what things look like for Millbrae in specific. The golden area, that represents the higher-end sea level rise scenario. It's important to note that that doesn't reflect the possible changes in uh combined flooding. Which is the impact of, you know, increased precipitation and runoff with sea level rise. Um causing more flooding generally within the city. That is not reflected here, cause that's a whole separate study, a very. Complicated hydraulic analysis, and this county's actually been working on something for that. So that will be available in the future. So some of the things that are at risk that were catalogued as part of this process are. Um the obviously the drainage system, right? Pump stations, businesses, hotels, the water pollution control plant. Of course, is right on the bay, uh city buildings, electrical and gas infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, lots of that. Um including the BART, um and you know, the intermodal station, um some of the new TODs, homes, et cetera. So there's a lot of assets that were identified, and many of those assets were not identified by the county's previous study. So this helps us understand what's at risk. So just as a quick highlight, um the property value at risk is estimated between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and eighty million dollars. That is um for the mid-level and the high-end scenarios respectively. And then tax dollars at risk, a hundred and ten to a hundred and seventy-five million dollars. And when you look at the cost estimate um for mitigation, which comes, you know, much later in the assessment. Um we're talking about something in the magnitude of maybe a hundred million, seventy million is the estimate that we have so far. Of course, that wouldn't cover everything, um and that's a very preliminary estimate, but when you look at that uh comparison. Uh it suggests that it's very important that action be taken in order to save the city money in the long run. So you need to know that obviously Millbrae is not an island, and when sea levels rise, that water. Can come in and fill up an area like a bathtub. If it doesn't come in through the Millbrae shoreline, it may come in. Through a neighboring city, San Mateo, Burlingame, um South City, and it can run. Along the land all the way down and inundate the city. So you need to be protected either from all sides, in a in a ring levy scenario. Kind of like what San Francisco Airport is doing, or you need to work together collaboratively. And so um as part of this assessment, we looked at work that had been done by the San Francisco Estuary Institute. In identifying the topography of the bay. Who are our regional partners? Who are the folks from high ground to high ground that we would all need to work together to have a single shoreline? Elevated to protect us all. Um those folks are South City, SFO, San Bruno, Burlingame. San Mateo, and then obviously the county would be a partner there as well. And there are many other agencies who would be a part of this, right? Private, private and public, Caltrans, Caltrain, BART, et cetera. But the folks that we worked with in preparing the initial assessment were um those cities and the airport, as well as the county. So you can look at the solution, if you will, sea level rise as two-pronged. One is shoreline, right? You you wanna raise the shoreline to keep the bay out. The other is um local solutions, so solutions to drainage to improve uh the performance of. Moving that water uh out to the bay as the sea levels rise. And you can look at starting to put in lower levels of work first as sea levels rise. And you have more time to prepare for larger types of mitigation, such as a flood wall or sea wall along the shoreline. So just bearing that in mind, um let me highlight for you some of the areas where um work is needed within the city. So you may be aware that the city doesn't own a lot of shoreline, really only the Highline Canal Tide Gate is owned uh by the city. The area shown in green there, the Bay Shore, that's actually owned by um the airport. Although um the the roadway portion there is owned by the city. So we have two options, um you know, along the shoreline. Something within Bayfront Park, um like a levy or flood wall. And then also, you know, if we can't come to some kind of agreement with them, um something along the roadway is possible as well. So we've got reaches uh also extending into the city along the canals. These are pathways for flooding, so as the sea levels rise. If water backs up in those canals, excuse me, um we could see potentially overtopping in those areas. And I will highlight for you some of those vulnerable reaches that were found. But I just wanna um point out both the the Highline and the Cowan canals are pathways as well as the shoreline. So some of the solutions that we can talk about are, um you know, raising the shoreline with sea walls. Flood walls and tide gates. So we know that the Highline Canal Tide Gate leaks, um and there are issues there. Um so we wanna look at, you know, making that shoreline secure and also raising it. So there are some spots that are low, there are some spots that are low along canals. And we wanna work with the regional partners to prevent flooding from their jurisdictions, just ending around our protective systems and flooding the city. Of course, there are also, like I said, those local structural things that can be done. So raising the canal, strengthening the canal embankments to prevent seepage and overtopping. Um working on the tide gates and making upgrades to pump stations to ensure there's redundant backup. Um pumping capacity as well as potentially adding new pump stations. So um as drainage flows downhill, it will be stopped by any new shoreline structure. And it will need to be pumped over into the higher bay. Uh there are also site-specific improvements that the city can look at, and as part of this assessment, we performed an asset vulnerability assessment. On the water pollution control plant, which is a little bit more of a deep dive about how that particular facility could be protected. Um so there's more information in the assessment about that particular asset vulnerability profile, but it is of note that it's um a facility that's just out there. Near the bay and is quite vulnerable, and so um you know, we would need to look at other ways we could protect that. Um if it takes longer to develop some of the shoreline solutions. Then there are, of course, local non-structural solutions. So we need to continue to plan to better understand. Risks and responses. Um the city has, of course, completed recently a Stormbrain Master Plan, which I was proud to be part of. Um there's also been a lot of work in hazard mitigation planning that is ongoing. Those are routinely updated. And the Climate Action Plan has recently been updated. So um these are important plans that reflect the risks to the city. And we need to continue integrating our understanding of sea level rise into all the city's planning efforts. We can also look at um continuing stricter development standards to elevate and protect structures. We can also look at continuing stricter development standards to elevate and protect structures. And by this, I mean the city has already a more restrictive standard in the floodplains to protect structures from, you know, all kinds of flooding risk, but also sea level rise. So there are other things that the city can look at. So in terms of next steps, broadly, we need to continue to collaborate with the regional partners. I'm sure you're aware that there is a new and expanded definition of the responsibilities of the flood district. Now it's the flood and sea level rise district within the county. And they are a very important future partner because they will be looking to provide funding from the state and from the federal level to support the city's need to implement projects. And so as a very important partner, we need to be having conversations with them about the readiness of Millbrae to execute projects. We have ideas, we have recommendations, we have projects that are ready to go. We are well-positioned to get that funding from the county and from the district to drive change for the city. We need to continue, at the same time, planning and designing shoreline mitigations. So while we're having conversations to set up relationships and continue relationships with the regional partners, we can be working on planning and engineering, right? Selecting which sea level rise elevation the city wants to design to, you know, preparing preliminary engineering for the projects, as well as continuing to upgrade the city's local drainage system, which is an ongoing effort, of course, as money allows cities constantly working on projects to improve the drainage of the city. And those recommendations from the Storm Train Master Plan are carried forward in the assessment. So it's important to keep working on that because as sea level rise change occurs, then drainage will perform worse and worse over time if we do nothing. And that's why the city is taking active steps to improve that drainage system. We also need to continue, like I said, to integrate our findings into other local and regional plans, identify and track funding opportunities. So for example, an important next step is developing a funding plan for, for these types of mitigations. And just generally continue to work with the community to increase understanding of the flood risks, the risks from sea level rise, any steps we need to take to continue progress. So that's what I have for you, and I'm happy to take questions as you wish.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. Let's start with Councilman Lee.
Yeah, sorry, just to put my hand down, but thank you for your presentation. It was very good. And I just wondering, actually I have more questions for staff. It seems to me like the option to, to collaborate with the airport property or Burlingame, whoever has that part of shoreline might be the cheapest, cheapest way to, 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 to address sea level rise. I, I want to, I need to comment on that. And also, I need to, I wonder if there are any seepage too, groundwater seepage that will bubble up due to sea level rise, due to hydraulics, and is that being addressed? Because in the Bayview area, I'm suspecting a lot of that has to do with, with the tide, tides, tidal way, the tidal effect and the hydrology underneath the neighborhood.
Yes, Ms. Mack, can I address the council member's first part of that question? Which is, this study, it was necessary that now paves the way for us to collaborate with SFO and Burlingame and the sea level rise and resilience newly-formed special district. And so the next step, now that we've identified this, as Millie said, as has Burlingame and SFO, we can now collaborate and move forward. As a matter of fact, we're talking with the executive director of the new district, as well as Burlingame and SFO, of doing just that, collaborating on the next step and next phase to move forward. With what is, you know, the, the realistic improvements, infrastructure improvements? How do we fund it? How far out is that in the future? What is the phasing collectively with Millbrae, Burlingame and SFO? And then the second part of the question on hydrology, I would refer to, to Millie or Keelim.
I can help if you wish.
Yes, Millie, please. How did you figure out flooding and also sea level rise? So there are multiple factors that we are talking about. So as a scientist, I'll let Millie explain it to you.
Yeah, so I, I want to flag for you that we weren't able to do groundwater modeling as part of this effort. That's beyond the scope of the current effort. However, we are aware that that is an issue. We do expect that as the levels rise, groundwater will also rise, and we could see flooding as a result of that in the low-lying areas. A lot of, I, I've seen a lot of preliminary work done on that, and it is a concern for sure. Some of that can be addressed by some of the local drainage improvements that we've spoken about. But additional work is needed to really quantify and understand the priorities there in terms of where you would invest first and, you know, what's most important there. Also, I, I will highlight that we have had a number of conversations with the airport. Of course, he has a good relationship with them and is keeping that dialogue open. We presented preliminary findings and requested input from the airport as part of this project. And we have worked collaboratively with staff at the county who have moved to the sea level rise district as well. So that dialogue is, is at least initiated, but, you know, more work is needed.
Okay, let's see, Vice Mayor Schneider.
Okay, first question, and I served on the vulnerability task force several years ago. And to me, one of the biggest threats for our residents anyway is the Colma Creek overflow on a high tide, saturated soils and rain. So that means coordinating with San Bruno and Colma and South City. And originally, because I was attending the sea level rise meetings, Supervisor Pinestaff came up and said, well, Anne, isn't that a great idea? We'll just let Colma Creek overflow into the wetlands that are going to run behind San Bruno in Millbrae. So while I think it's great to coordinate with SFO and Burlingame, I think it's equally as important to coordinate with San Bruno and South City because that is one of the projects going forward right now, the Colma Creek project. And I don't know if the plan is still to have the overflow into the wetlands behind us, but that will flood Landing Lane.
Yeah, and just speaking to existing conditions, that is a problem, you know, in some respects now that that, there is a pathway and, you know, during a flood, it is possible for water to enter the city in the existing condition through those wetlands. So yeah, definitely a concern, that area.
Okay, well, that is not discussed in the plan, and it needs to be added into the plan because we need to be able to speak with our partners to the north, as well as San Bruno, that hasn't had the same people attending council meetings or sea level rise meetings over the last five years. So that they know that this is a plan that our neighbors to the north are thinking about doing. Second plan, in your report, it talks about SFO creating itself as an island. But right now, SFO also maintains La Mita Canal. La Mita Canal is the one that keeps flooding into Landing Lane. And it always amazes me why Marina Vista doesn't get flooded, but it's a little bit higher elevation than the others. If SFO goes into its island, what does that mean they're going to do in terms of La Mita Park or La Mita Canal and the pump station that seems to be inactive and was certainly inactive when Landing Lane flooded a few years ago?
I can address the recommendations that have been made and the discussions that have been had with SFO. So SFO would, would love to not build the levy or the flood wall along the backside of their property, but they're so far ahead of everyone else that they're proceeding with that plan because they need to remove themselves from the floodplain, the FEMA floodplain. So that's why they've been pursuing that. Now, some of the work that they are doing and will do addresses some of the, the reaches along the shoreline that are important to Millbrae. So I don't know if you could see here nine and 10, those are areas, well, they'll be doing work. Those are kind of the red off to the, the left or the top.
Vinyl walls? Is that the vinyl walls that are talked about?
Yeah, vinyl sheep hole with riprap around the bottom, yeah.
Do we have any idea what that looks like?
Of about fifteen. And so that's, that's adequate to meet what protection level we would recommend for the mid-level and, and then some.
And you do know that their original plans were to turn all of the mud flats of Millbrae into a gravel bit? Because they don't want any birds.
No.
So when I read this report and I read all of the references to heaven forbid we should have birds, and then you talk about how we went out and brought in the public. Well, I can tell you four or five different environmental groups who have completely different data about wetlands and birds and which birds are a problem to an airport. And I don't see any of that in this report. So I'm really concerned when I read through each one of the options, which basically led us to an engineering solution without any natural solution at all. And on top of that, then I'm curious, does that match what Burlingame is doing? Because the early plans at the sea level rise meetings was Burlingame was going to get wet mud flats and wetlands, and Millbrae would get gravel. So it looks like the gravel's gone away instead of a big wall that will put us behind a big, theoretically could be nice, could also be ugly as heck.
Yeah, so let me add mud flats and the opportunities there. It's, this section shoreline is not highly conducive to some of the very, let me say, very expensive in terms of permitting and cost of fill ecotone levy type solutions. But we already have these beautiful mud flats there, which are conducive to habitat and which do reduce the energy of waves along the shoreline. We have a protected portion of shoreline. So in some ways, it doesn't make sense to try to change what's there because it is conducive to habitat. And we do talk about the opportunity with any shoreline solution to add eelgrass, which is one of the recommendations that was put forth during some of the earlier studies. It is a site that is theoretically conducive to that. And instead of destroying the tidal mud flats to put something else there, why not enhance those with the eelgrass option? So that's, that's the story with the mud flats. Burlingame is still looking at some sections of their shoreline that are more conducive to some of those environmental options. It's really about the topography, the flow of the tides there. And, you know, there's been some preliminary work that was done, obviously, by SFEI and others to recommend certain locations. But it is important that we keep the partners happy because SFO.
Okay, I'm going to stop you there. SFO has not been a good partner to Millbrae. SFO has expanded and expanded and expanded at our expense and have done no mitigations for any of their expansion plans. So why do we need to be good partners with an entity who is not a good partner to us? So I read that throughout there. We need to be good partners with an entity who is not, one hundred percent absolutely not a good partner.
Yes, ma'am. They do own the Bayfront Park, and that is one of the.
Well, that was debatable. That used to be Millbrae's, and there was, there was something that happened there, and the city needs to follow up with that. I am tired of Millbrae being treated like a third-class citizen. And this report continues to treat us that way. Moving on to another subject, in the charts in the report, it lists all of the public products or public assets. It doesn't even list the number of homes that would be affected by the two flood scenarios. Can we get the number of homes added in there, as well as the number of businesses and homes on Broadway that seem to be within the yellow zone? There's still a lot of missing data in that report. The discussion that San Andreas Lake doesn't drain, we have springs throughout Millbrae that are carrying water from that lake into Millbrae.
Could we please stop shooting the messenger? While your points are very well taken, council member, I.
And you're interrupting me. I don't interrupt you when you speak.
I don't.
I would appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Schneider, please, please wrap up your comments. Please continue on with your comments.
There's a number of errors in here, but the main one, there's ordinances that I've never seen before. Floodplain management ordinance would be great to see that. And basically, for the recommendations for the city right now, I would say no. Not until we bring in San Francisco Save the Bay to talk about other alternatives. This is strictly an engineering alternative and not a bioengineering alternative. And I would have preferred doing this in an infrastructure subcommittee meeting, so we could talk issue by issue before the report went public, but it's too late for that.
Well, I'm going to jump in here real quick. So, so the purpose of this, let's not lose sight of what the objective and purpose of this study is. This is the first step in evaluating what our needs are. But the other thing we need to do then is to move forward, as I mentioned, in response to Councilmember Lee's question, is this now allows us to identify what the issues are in Millbrae? And now we can move forward collaboratively, collaboratively with our, our other two partners, Burlingame and SFO, to look at other solutions. And those may be more creative, they may be more biologically friendly. But the purpose of this study was really to evaluate what our need is, given the sea level rise projections over the next hundred years. So we still have a lot of work to do. This is really just the first step. There's a whole funding and financing plan. Right now, we're at seventy-five million. You know, who, who's going to pay for that? How are we going to pay for that? So Vice Mayor Schneider, there's still a lot of work to do. This is just, you know, this, this is the first step.
And Tom, it needs to come back to the infrastructure committee so we can do the deep dive with you.
Yeah, so we're working with Lynn.
And I asked for the infrastructure meeting for the last six weeks. I have emails asking for the infrastructure meeting, and we have been able to get a subcommittee meeting. So can we get one?
We can reconvene in the subcommittee meeting. Yes, not a problem. Okay.
Nobody bothered to get back to my emails on it. So I'm not really happy with the report.
Okay, point taken. All right, see if there are any public comments on this item. Mr. DeRosa, are you still, still here? Or any other members of the public would like to comment?
I'm still here.
Okay, Mr. DeRosa, would, go ahead.
Okay, thanks again, Mayor Oliver, Vice Mayor Schneider and City Council. Let me just start all over. My name's Chris DeRosa, I am a resident on Landing Lane. I have been in contact with the city regarding the flooding and flood mitigation issues in our area since two thousand and thirteen. The area in the past has flooded several times, and I believe it may have caused some damage to a couple homes on the lower side. Today, there is still no flood mitigation plan by the city, but the DPW has been clearing La Mita Canal on a yearly basis, staying on top of the airport, which improved the flow and prevented, and prevented any flooding. But of course, there is still no plan, but DPW heads who are in charge will retire sooner or later, and we will have to start this all over again. With regards to the sea level rise adaptations assessment by the city and this county, for one, I know there is supposedly some outreach, but of course, there are three main flood-prone areas, Bayside Manor, Marina Vista and Atlantic Lane Santa Semoloupe. I, it never reached us. These are the people who are mainly infected. As I saw from the survey, only seventeen people took it, and most were on the west side. In the second part was the one, one point three point one, which is the vulnerability assessment. La Mita Canal was not even mentioned in that vulnerability assessment. She did mention that the SFIA is currently planning to isolate themselves. Does this actually include the West Side properties? Because the West Side properties is in direct connection with the La Mita Canal. And if they do elevate that out of the floodplain, it may also elevate Landing Lane out of the floodplain itself. So I think we should look into that. Thirdly, of course, I already talked about outreach. The combined flooding states of drainage lacks capacity. The land usage that they use was twenty-one years old, but residential loss was a hundred and three to a hundred and sixty-six residents. Regarding the vulnerabilities and the reaches, they only included the shoreline. La Mita Canal wasn't included in that, even though it was included in the flood mitigation. plan, which is through the storm drained master plan. I'm just curious, is that survey still able to, are we still able to use that survey? Or is that defunct already? That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. DeRosa. There any, let's see. Ms. Kelly Crawford, did you have any response to any of those comments?
I can respond.
Sure.
The assessment purpose was to incorporate feedback on the, you know, the, the initial assessment. And so that's not going to be able to be included in the assessment at this time because the assessment's complete. I can't speak to additional outreach. Key, do you want me to go into the, the details that there's a lot of specifics in there that I can address if you'd like?
I think we could, we could explain at a very high level.
Okay. Great. So let me, let me pull up what I've got here. So the, the first question was about Lomita Canal not being included in the assessment. It was not addressed at all in the county's assessment and we have addressed it in terms of recommending that work be done on the drainage system within the city because that's important. And that's one of the items that was highlighted in the Storm Master Plan, which is essentially incorporated by reference with specifics added. It is important to note that in terms of sea level rise, with the exception of water entering from San Fernando and South City, right? That is hydrolically separated by the pump station, which pumps that drainage water into the High Line Canal and then out to the bay. And so it's not part of the shoreline adaptations, but it is part of the recommendations for the local adaptations. In terms of outreach, yes, ma'am.
Just a clarification, the county vulnerability assessment didn't have enough fundings to look at everything that would be a problem. So they concentrated on thirty archetypes. So the Bart Station was one, High Line Canal was one, somebody else's sewage treatment plant was one on both the bayside and the ocean side. And but that does not mean, well, that is an oversight then if the county didn't come back and look at the additional problems on that. And that probably should go to the new flood sea level committee. They can't just ignore it. But we didn't have the bandwidth to do more than thirty assessments.
That's great. The assessment was definitely, you know, funding and time constrained and was a big picture. And that's one of the reasons that the county did fund additional assessments to be prepared. Of course, those funding dollars are also limited. So we did prepare, like I said, that deeper dive on the asset vulnerability profile for the water pollution control plant, which is, you know, the city facility. But there are many, many additional studies that need to be performed as we move forward. You know, as, as Mr. Williams stated, it is just a first step in trying to understand the risk and communicate that more broadly.
And I would just add that in that respect, that we have SFPUC that has assets. We have Bart that has assets. We have Samtrans and Caltrans that have assets. We have Samtrans, you know, and Caltrans. So there are many governmental jurisdiction agencies that have assets in the city of Millbrae that we need to bring to the table and participate in figuring out our remediation for sea level rise to protect their assets as well.
That's right. And we did reach out to a number of those folks. We didn't get, have time or budget, obviously, to address everything. And, you know, with the timeline that we had, we weren't able to have detailed meetings with all of those entities. We did have quite a few conversations with PG&E, for example, about some of their assets and what they're doing to better understand, you know, what all of these folks are doing. We need more time and, and effort put toward it. So that's why that's one of the recommendations is ongoing collaboration and outreach.
All right. Councilman Pappin, your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Informational, but it appears we are missing a lot of information. So the, I guess we need some additional information. And I am deeply concerned that we just kind of settled for a limited number of residential surveys. This is the type of thing that is so very important to our residents who are very busy with their own lives here. This really, it's not that big an area that we shouldn't be really knocking on doors and making sure people are engaged about this. So if we can get the vice mayor's comments and the information to further proceed here, I agree that sometimes these partners of ours have their own agenda. And we've already seen that with the Millbrae Station and the access plans. So we really need to be first and foremost advocates for the city of Millbrae and our residents. So if we could, and I understand cost limitations here, but again, it is extremely important. So if we can at least get a list of the information that we need, if we need to seek some sort of additional funding, it is well worth it at this point in time. So I hope that, Millie, we can keep going here, but we do need to be productive for the benefit of Millbrae in the long term. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappin. Councilwoman Oliva?
Thank you, Millie. Thank you for the information and I'm very happy that we took a step in the right direction or forwarding this issue that is so great to where we live. I would, I would echo the sentiment. None of us are experts here on council. So thank you for leading that. But please don't forget, I mean, we had Chris DeRosa on and he's very concerned for a lot of reasons, more than any of us have. And that is so important that they get the, they are the comfort going forward. And as Councilmember Pappin said, it's a small, small community in Millbrae and it's a smaller community that's going to be affected by this and they're very important to all of us. So please don't leave them out of this conversation.
Okay, thank you very much. And, you know, I think we're all concerned about, you know, the price tag here, seventy million. And it says that doesn't even, that's only a partial list of adaptations. So I think, you know, something that maybe our staff can begin to work on, you know, obviously, our, we can't fund seventy million just through a general fund. So potentially looking at ways to help begin to fund this. You know, obviously, there, there could be some funding through the county flood, sea level rise district. Likely won't be enough to fund all of our needs. So if maybe the, the funding and, and capital plan, if we can start to develop that and build that out and see what maybe some reasonable, you know, goals could be for beginning to implement some of these infrastructure improvements, that would be, I think greatly appreciated. All right, let's move on now. That was only an informational report, so we do not have to Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider.
I'm sorry, one more thing that they could look at it. And Mr. DeRosa can explain this better. The way the FEMA and the flood insurance program works, residents, if they do a certain number of actions or if the city they are in do a certain number of actions, they can get a reduced insurance rate. The problem is you have to have a certain number of houses. And the way our flood zones are broken up, they don't have that concentration of houses. However, Landing Lane, if they could partner with San Bruno and if we could get the rules changed to include Marina Vista and Bayside Manor, would have the number of houses with the city working with them to get a reduction in their flood insurance, which apparently is astronomically high. But it also means that they're doing actions that can protect the homes from flooding. I would like to see this report not just look at city product or city buildings, but our residents in this too. And that, that discussion of how to help our residents with their flood insurance by doing XYZ actions should be in this report.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure they will look into that. So Councilman Lee, one final comment before we move on.
Two quick, quick, quick questions. Do we know how, how much the, how, what's the rate of sea level rise at this time? Or predict it? And then Tom, do we have, are we collecting impact fees from developers or is that part of our fees to help address sea level rise?
So we don't have, it's on our to-do list. We don't have an impact fee for sea level rise because we haven't determined what the infrastructure need is until this report. Now we know it's seventy million dollars. That price tag is going to increase, you know, based on, on the way we design it. So once we have the projects, the infrastructure projects approved and have a value, then we can use that as the nexus to amend our development impact fee program. And so just, just also a word of caution that we can't expect development to pay all of this. They can only pay their fair share. And they, we can't charge development for existing deficiencies.
I understand.
There's a couple of different things there's
I would, I would think that Burlingame and the airport, even though, you know, we're not always agree on certain things, we might agree that any, any low point can affect them. So it would be to their benefit to help defray and build this wall.
Yeah, I think as Vice Mayor Schneider mentioned, the infrastructure subcommittee, we, we have actually been having very good dialogue with both SFO and Burlingame regarding what the next steps are working together. So that is, that is forthcoming.
City manager, if the airport is trying to island themselves off and they're going ahead with creating a berm or a levee around themselves, that prevents a way for water to access the bay, which means it's going to back up onto 101 or back up into us. Now, I don't know exactly where the berms are, but it's not rocket science to see how water is going to move. So it'll be lovely to have an infrastructure subcommittee. We haven't had one since February.
I don't think the Army Corps of Engineers and all of the approving agencies will ever allow that to happen. So I don't think that SFO
The Mississippi floods
Okay.
And over and over
Yeah, yeah, I'm just All right.
I'm just saying that I, I think that that I think that the resource agencies will, will protect us and through that process of working closely with SFO, I, I, I don't see that happening.
Tom, I'm sorry
All right, let's move on to item number ten.
SFO did not protect us from the noise or the particulates. There is no agency out there protecting us. And for the record, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, I feel really strongly about this. And to answer Councilman Lee, both TOD one and two had within their community benefits, redoing the storm water and sewer water and purple piping water systems, all of which would help us with climate resiliency. So when the regional agencies, our partners, put a hold on TOD one, they are putting a hold on our climate resiliency and sea level work. And that needs to be in the record and we need to start making sure that the greater powers that be understand what they are doing to us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. All right, let's move to item number ten. This is a proposal to defer water rate increases effective July one, 2020 to January one, 2021. Do we have a presentation? Or
We do, we do just have a very brief, I think we have two slides of a presentation of Mr. Key.
Yep.
Yeah, it's already a motion.
It's at, it's at the pleasure of the mayor.
Let's see, let's see the, the very brief presentation.
Can you guys see my screen right now?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, council, Mr. Mayor and member of the municipal council, Key Lyman. So tonight I do want to, as the council, by motion, defer the water rate schedule to be increased on July first, 2020 for six months. But the next increase will be January first, 2021. So the charts that you are looking at on the screen right now is the proposed five-year water rate increase that the council adopted. I believe that was on September 12, 2017. So on October 1st, 2017, after proper, pro-218 noticing, we established a rate as stated on the table, effective on October 1st, 2017. And on July 1st, 2018, we brought the rates up by about ten, ten percent in the game, ten percent every year until July 1st of 2021. So just some, some, a little education for the council and also member of the audience. The Millbrae Water Rates consist of two components. As you could see on the top of the charts here, there is a fixed monthly service charge and those are based on meter sizes. A typical residential meter size in Millbrae is about eighty percent of them, I would say about three-quarter inch. And those are a typical single-family home and the newer larger home, double-story home with fire sprinkler system, those tend to have a one-inch. So about ninety, ninety-five percent of our customers, they all fell into the category of three-quarter inch and one-inch. So those are the base charges as I highlight on July 1st. So actually, the rate should have gone up to twenty-seven fifty effective a couple of weeks ago. But we decided to hold off on that and bring this item to the council tonight as the council to approve our request to defer, delay the rate increase for six months due to the pandemic. So the second component of the water rate invoice would be the quantity charges. Those are based on the usage. A typical single-family home in Millbrae uses about six units of water per month for thirty days. So we bill our customer every two months and also our bill consists of water and sewer charges. So with that being said, we would like to, as the council by motion tonight, to waive, to defer or delay the water rate increase by six months. And with that being said, we realize that we're going to see a reduction in revenues of about $100,000 between now and the end of the year. And we intend to bring back the fiscal year 2021 budget to the council sometime in September, at which time we will update the council on the water enterprise fund. So with that, I'd like to receive any questions that the council may have tonight regarding the delay of water rate increase.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lynn. Let's take Councilman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Key and your staff for providing the report. Sounds like we're going to be able to absorb the, the rate, delaying the rate. Is there, is there a catch-up, a catch-up program? And, and if so, what would that mean? And I also make the motion to approve.
We, we are not proposing any catch-up program. I think we just manage the flow of funds and then, you know, stretch things out with the, you know, six months deferment payment right now.
That is correct, yes.
And I believe the July one, 2021 increase would still be scheduled at that time, right?
That is correct, yes.
Would push everything back. Okay.
That is correct. Yeah, we are delaying the increase that was scheduled for July 1st about two weeks ago until January 1st of 2021. And then which time it will go up to twenty-seven fifty for three-quarter inch water meter and eleven dollars and sixty cents for every CCF of water use, which equal to seven hundred and forty-eight gallons.
We do have to, and on a, on a note for the future, we really do have to address the cost of water. And it's, it's, we, as, I understand why our city has one of the highest rates because of our size and lack of commercial, commercial businesses offset the costs. So, but we do need to start looking into how we, how can we keep the rate set rising at the minimum.
Correct.
And I think there was also a question there about absorbing the cost. Can, maybe you address that?
Due to the pandemic, we have actually slowed down on our expenditures and also a lot of the nonessential projects have been put, put on hold since, since March of this year. So there is some savings in the enterprise fund that can carry over for, carry us into, well into next year.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Pappin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I greatly appreciate giving our residents a break during this time. Also, the noting the South San Francisco scavengers also are giving the residents a break. We note that there are seventy miles of water lines within the city of Millbrae. I think we need We note that there are seventy miles of water lines within the city of Millbury. I think we need to still be a little more transparent on our website as to what we are doing with the money collected. I get it, you're saying this much usage and this much whatever, but the public needs to know what's being spent on infrastructure, where and when, and is there an endgame? We need to be a lot more transparent. People are really hurting and every time that bill comes out, I mean, we all cringe. So knowing that and moving forward, this little, um, little bit helps at this point in time, but Millbury needs to be more transparent. We have to communicate with the public as to how the money that's being collected is spent right there on that website, please.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my question was sort of answered when Key talked about the non-essential projects during SIP, but so that the public understands what's essential and what's non-essential. What are non-essential water-related projects?
Well, a lot of the non-re, uh, essential water project would be sort of a, a private development type of connection and all the non-is, uh, all the emergency essential project, which is to provide reliability and safety to our customer and also primarily for firefighting requirements. So we make sure that all the essential functions of the water system is functioning as they designed to be. And then also, please, please, go ahead.
Uh, we're still working on the plan for replacement of the water tanks, which we need for water pressure in the event of a fire or earthquake?
That is correct. That, uh, Vice Mayor Schneider is referring to the Skylight tank, which is a one million and a half a million gallon tank, and we are planning to consolidate the tank. We are currently in final design and the project is scheduled to, uh, go into construction, uh, at the end of, uh, twenty twenty-one.
So, good. Everything that gets closer to shovel-ready, if there are some infrastructure federal funds coming through, it'd be great that we could be lined up to try to get federal funding for these instead of our rate payers paying for it. But I agree with, with the other people. We need to help our residents understand why and see if there's anything we can do on water rates, because otherwise we look like a desert for at least six months out of the year. Thank you, I'm happy to second this.
All right, I think, uh, all the comments have been made on this. Um, sounds like we have a motion from Councilman Lee, a second from, uh, Vice Mayor Schneider. Uh, we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Aliva?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Holliver?
Hi.
By the motion of the city council to defer the proposed water rate increase scheduled to be effective on July first, twenty twenty until January twenty twenty-one, um, past the end of sleep.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on now to council comments and maybe we can start with, uh, Councilman Lee.
Um, I'm gonna defer. I don't have any, uh, pertinent comments on this time.
Okay, um, so Councilwoman, uh, Pappen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Subcommittee Mayor, uh, Councilmember Lee and I, uh, are suggesting, and this probably may be a reason for a sooner or next meeting. We have one more meeting, is that correct, uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, um, putting on the next meeting, the alignment of California Drive, defining that so that uh, the committee can move on to other issues here, or at least we can define Millbury's rights moving forward. So ask that be put on the agenda and it just finalizes, I believe, what was in the specific plan and now with all the details. So that is one item. I note that Mills High School tennis courts will be opening on July seventeenth. Cappuccino is somewhat delayed due to construction. Hopefully those will be open soon. Uh, I also wanted to inquire, and I guess we'll get this offline, a cell tower went up in Millbury and, um, I don't know where we are on those, but it is concerning to the public whenever that happens. So maybe a briefing along those lines at our next meeting as well. And then, um, we as a council have discussed, and I hope we can pursue a plan for public information as it relates to our transit developments so that we can keep the public informed as to the accurate information instead of rumors and misinformation. So we, as a council, coming together for a public information plan would be exceptionally helpful, I think, for the city of Millbury as well as our future developments. So, um, I hope that, uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't know how you want to handle that, but I think we are united in our, uh, desire to move forward with our developments as have been improved and also um, to help with the housing crisis, which was mentioned earlier, and keep things moving along. So I hope we can, um, come up with some sort of a plan. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, to Councilwoman Aliva?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, so with regards to the, a couple of committees that I've been able to participate in with, uh, Sheriff's Activity League, um, obviously they're suffering desperately with, um, creative uh, ideas to come up with what they can do with the kids and the children that, um, are home and are relying on the activities that, uh, generally go on in the summertime. Um, and it's been, it's been really, um, a really kind of like, uh, a brain test to come up with ideas, not only to what they can do, but also how we're going to raise money so they can do it. But I'll give, uh, kudos to the Sheriff's Activity League in our county for helping us out there, and I'm very grateful for our city to be one of the, um, participants in that. And, um, if anybody gets an opportunity to look at the videos of what has been done with regards to hikes and beaches and but are pretty cool and, um, kudos to them and I'm, I'm proud to be part of that and represent the city of Millbury. Committee, um, is, uh, a lot of development in the best cities and and even, uh, looking to provisions to certify, I've, I've been privy to be a part of a subcommittee to look at San Carlos Airport and see how we can help with different things that are going on down there. Um, and lastly, I just want to make a mention that, you know, I, I got bombarded today with a couple of more than a handful of emails I'll share with council um, with regards to what's going on in next door. And can I, I mean, I don't need to remind you. I think everybody here is pretty cool about it. But we, we cannot accept bullying. And, uh, they, they actually pulled out one of, one of the young kids that came to one of our council meetings. And I think it's actually, uh, a next-door neighbor that doesn't even live in Millbury. And I'm not quite sure how that happens, but yet we do not support that kind of, of behavior. It's not tolerable. And, um, we are obviously, um, going to go to an election, but we have to stand tall and we have to represent, um, good people that represent our city and everybody, everybody has a voice, whether they're sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen years old. Uh, we want to encourage those people through the microphone and hear their ideas. So, um, with that being said, I hope everybody's being safe and, um, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, see Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, um, today I was talking to a staffer for the Transportation Authority. They will be releasing a bicycle pedestrian grant. And this had been posted out on the Bike Grant Community. The problem is, and my battery is running low. Uh, the problem is, uh, they're looking at equity measures. In fact, right now, the county is looking at equity issues on the two COVID committees that I'm serving on. And basically what that means is projects are not coming anywhere near Millbury. I can go into much more detail. I've been trying to inform Tom, our city manager, of that. But the equity programs look at East Palo Alto, they look at South, uh, the coast. They look at Daly City, although one that they just announced on infrastructure is they're going to include San Bruno and that's a five-thousand-dollar grant for minority businesses. And yet Millbury is not included in that, even though many of our businesses are, uh, are equity businesses. So the county is on this equity lens. I think it would be important for us to look at the equity lens and see what that really means. Um, the way the Transportation Authority looked at it, they're going to look at these grants, they're competitive grants, which make it tougher for smaller cities. And they're looking at, are the grants equally going between North County, Central County, and South? But not to which individual cities can get them. And I can tell you that if you look at who receives the bulk of the C-CAG, B-CAG, BPAC grants, those, the bulk of those grants have gone to South San Francisco, San Mateo, and I, I get confused whether it's Belmont or Redwood City. There's a concentration of grant monies in certain cities within the county. And for us on the BPAC Equity Group, we'll be looking at what does it mean to be equitable in the distribution of grants as well as achieving the goals of connectivity? So bike trail connectivity, um, safe routes to schools and things like that. Um, it's just, uh, it, it's really interesting right now. Long-term COVID recovery is pretty much concentrating on schools and making sure that technology will get to schools. If we have residents here in Millbury that need help with connectivity, um, our community won't get looked at right away unless we become a squeaky wheel. So if we have parents out there concerned about other residents who may not have connectivity for school, that's one area. If we have seniors at home that are being isolated because of COVID and will remain being isolated, we have to figure out how we can, where they are and how we can help them with connectivity so that they don't fall down into depression due to isolation. Um, so good news or bad news on that? The good news is the two high school student utility boxes are done. Um, hats off to Debbie Van Wart and Barbara Whitley, who have been going to the utility boxes with the students as they paint them. And, um, the senior painting project, they would love to start as soon as Public Works can get the box behind Pape's Meat Market ready. They are ready to go. And Culture Arts will be working, I hope. Uh, the League of Women Voters has asked for our assistance for some form of modified celebration of a woman's right to vote in America, which is happening in August. And Ruben, you and I have been working on that and then COVID happened. And they're just looking for some kind of, of, maybe a poster contest for our students or our people in Millbury and turn it into an art show on a whole range of not just women's right to vote, but voting rights, voter disenfranchisement, um, all of the things that are happening regarding voting right now across the country. So hopefully, uh, the city will be able to help with that community art project, which we can do while sheltering at home. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, yeah, I don't have too much in terms of public meetings since the last time we had met, um, but the, uh, see, the Recreation Center Subcommittee met and we are, I think, close to determining, um, a recommendation for design-build, um, contract. We have three finalists that each have provided, uh, I probably shouldn't say too much about the details of the proposals, but I, I, I think we're, we're in the process of, uh, receiving, I believe, a, a best and final offer from each of the proposals, proposers, which is allowed under the design-build, uh, state law. Um, so hopefully we will be reconvening, um, sometime either later this week or early next week to discuss. Um, I believe also the Technology Subcommittee will be reconvening on, uh, Friday and we will look into um, possibly, uh, bringing back the data center RFP. There was, uh, an, an RFP that we had done last year. And I believe we only received one response, um, that was deemed to be non-responsive. Um, so we're, we're looking at, um, other ways to get the RFP out there to solicit more, um, interest. Um, so, uh, hopefully we'll have an update for that on that quite soon. Other than that, I don't think I have any additional, uh,
Mr. Mayor?
So we will, yes, uh, Councilman Lee?
Uh, real quick question, um, uh, in, in, uh, trying to, uh, piggyback off the Vice Mayor's comment about, uh, interconnectivity. Um, Mr. Williams, what is the, uh, status of our, uh, downtown Wi-Fi from going?
So Councilmember Lee, so the, uh, the downtown Wi-Fi has up and running.
Yeah, that might, that might be a, a short, uh, stopgap at this point to help some of our, our, uh, our citizens, um, to provide the internet that we need. It's not, you know, it's not appropriate for all day, but it's, it's, it's something. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. And I think as, had been mentioned earlier, the High-Speed Rail EIR was, um, released last week for the section between San Francisco and San Jose. It's a very dense, in-depth document and our, uh, city staff and, and legal counsel are um, coming through that and will be providing a, uh, very comprehensive response. I believe the deadline is in May, I think, May twenty-fourth, uh, for responses. So uh, we may need to have a special meeting at some point to review, um, that response. Um, but I think the, the business plan, the, the EIR, as opposed to the business plan, is a much more of a, a technical document and um, for, for that reason, it's, it's led by staff and, and by our legal counsel. Uh, and, but with council input as well. Okay, with that, uh, I think we will adjourn. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, sorry. And along those lines, our public information plan, I believe to be impactful should coincide with whatever comments we make, uh, related to the High-Speed Rail Plan in order to get the appropriate information out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On the High-Speed Rail, I've already talked to City Manager Williams. Uh, there are a number of residents and businesses that are going to be affected by this and, as well as the whole city put on hold for up to twenty years. And I think we need a town hall meeting for it. It can be done virtually. We need to reach out to our residents, especially those along the train line and tell them what's going on. And it, it's not just, EIRs are not just for governments to relate to. It's going to be important that our entire community speaks up on this.
I, I think that's a good idea and perhaps, um, you know, it, I think it's a, it's a forty-five day period in terms of the response. So maybe somewhere kind of in the middle and the next, you know, two or three weeks. Um, perhaps we'll have an opportunity to have our staff, uh, identify, um, you know, key concerns and, uh, you know, key highlights out of that plan that could then be presented in the town hall, um, so that we're not going into it blind. Um, and then use that as an opportunity for further feedback. I think maybe that would be a good, good way to, to address it.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, so with that, um, being said, I think we will now adjourn for this evening and we will be back um, the evening of July twenty-eighth. Um, thank you very much and.
One, one thing before we adjourn, uh, just, just a heads up that at the next meeting from six to seven, we will be having a study session uh, on the, uh, project that's being proposed at the O-Rancha Hotel.
And that's one of the five that we're entitled to?
That is, that is, uh, one of the five that we're entitled to.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear which hotel?
O-Rancha.
The project being proposed at the O-Rancha Hotel from six to seven on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, and that would just be a study session. There would be no, uh, I, I don't think it's even at the point where it could, you know, be approved at this point. Um, in, in terms of being a finalized plan, so.
No, that, yeah, that's just, that, just a study session. Yeah, that's just a study session and, yep.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm so sorry. Sorry. Um, the, um, there's going to be a workshop on the Plan Bay Area Twenty-Fifty Plan for San Mateo County, and I hope we can get this on our website and the information out. It is a Zoom workshop scheduled for July twenty-second, five-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM. This plan basically sets the guidelines for transportation. uh throughout the region as well as now a lot of the um Rena, because A Bag is a part of now MTC and all of that. So we really need to try to get this message out as quickly as possible. They have not been good in messaging, and I'm hoping that we can be better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so we will adjourn, and we'll see you all the evening of July twenty eighth. Good night, everyone.
Everybody.